What if the Chromebook would malfunction? Come on. All right. Is there, is there anyone who's going to want to lead us in the pledge tonight before we get? Okay, great. All right. And good evening, everyone. And welcome to this, the May 12th, 2025, meeting of the Lunenburg Planning Board. We are here upstairs in the Bellotta Meeting Room at Town Hall. And if you've heard me say that, you're already, already here with us. Welcome and thank you. Or you are watching us at home. If you are watching us at home and you want to comment, go ahead and log in with Zoom. You can do that by, well, our agenda is on the town website and the Zoom link is there. You can log in and you can comment, you know, use the hand raised feature to comment. This meeting is being recorded. And I believe that's everything we're required to say. So without further ado, if there's anyone who wants to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, excellent. So we will open up, as always, with public comment. There'll be some hearing, public hearings and stuff going on later. So if you're aiming for one of those, we can save comments till then. But for general public comment, do we have any? Seeing none? All right. And we'll go on to the Chair's Report. Few things going on tonight, one of which, we're shortly going to have Nels Nelson with us from Community Scale to kind of show us some options and talk through some choices we have going forward for MBTA communities. What's going to happen with that is here in Lunenburg, we are on the later end of implementing this mandated by the state by law. And that's fine. So what we're going to be doing is tonight, we're going to be hearing some presentations from Nels, or a presentation with some options from Nels. As a board, we may discuss that some tonight, but I'm going to encourage us to do that after our public hearings because we have a lot of people waiting. And then we're going to take about a month and a half to make, have some discussions as a board. The goal is to have a couple of public info design meetings to go over the options. And then with all that feedback, the board will be able to come to a decision about which option for the MBTA communities. And again, that's a, that's a mandate of, for us, about 240 units of fairly dense housing, much denser than we typically see in Lunenburg, put down on us by the state. We're going to be looking at that. I do want to let the board know that a line item, now that a line item has opened up in the budget, we're going to be able, looking at getting some interim planning help. Well, we'll also eventually be looking at hiring a new planner as well for the town, at least in the meantime, in the interim, we'll be able to look at some options. I'm working with the office on that. I think those are the biggies that aren't otherwise in the meeting or don't require an extra explanation. Okay. And without further ado, first item on our agenda is, we do have Nels from Community Scale here tonight, virtually.
Hi.
Hi, Nels.
Hello, everybody.
And I did get your email this afternoon about the 40R and everything, so glad to hear it.
Good deal. Okay. Well, it's a privilege and an honor to be able to speak with the Planning Board tonight. I have a short presentation that will walk us through what this means and what some of the options are, so I can go ahead and hopefully jump right into that. Let me see if I can share my screen. It's not turned on. You're sort of request.
So, Nels, apologize. One sec. Logan, since you're hosting, can you give Nels permission to share? And could we get the volume a little louder in the room, please? It's a little hard to hear, Nels. I'm going to assume TV heard that because I realize I have no way of verifying, but that should do it. Getting a thumbs up, so good. Okay.
I can share now. Nice. Okay. Let's do this one. All right. I want to see the town seal.
Yep.
Excellent. Okay. So I will just start by saying that we were connected to Lunenburg through MHP, the Massachusetts Housing Partnership. The, our involvement with the town is funded by a technical assistance grant. So we're contracted with MHP and here to provide technical assistance to the town of Lunenburg on your pathway towards compliance. So Lunenburg is an adjacent small town in the eyes of this legislation. You don't need to comply until the end of this calendar year. The amount of multifamily capacity is determined by the state based upon how many households there are. And so the allotment for Lunenburg is 240 units of multifamily unit capacity. That has to be on at least five acres of land. And because you're an adjacent small town, it doesn't have to be put anywhere in particular. So some other, other communities you might have heard about have to put it within a half mile or some part of it within a half mile of a transit station. That's not the case in Lunenburg. You have kind of free rein in terms of what part of the community it needs to be in. There's a couple of other requirements in terms of what, where the multifamily capacity can and can't be. But kind of holistically, if it's a privately owned site that's not in the wetland, then it should be good to go for adding capacity. So the other thing I'll note is that this isn't a building mandate. It's a mandate to have by right multifamily capacity at 15 units per acre. So with that, we received from Matt, a couple ideas for initial places where it could be, where the capacity could be located in Lunenburg. You'll notice that some of these already have some housing on them. That is something that is okay by the way that the legislation is written. And so, for example, you have a 40R district that has 131 units in it. If you were to rezone that to be by right, in a sense, you'd be getting credit for the good work that Lunenburg has already done. And so that would count towards your, your multifamily capacity. So we're going to look through these four options at kind of a high level and then have a discussion about the pros and cons of each of them. So the first one is, is the Zoom bars, I can move that out of the way, is 131 White Street, which is, has enough district acres, so it's almost six acres. Some of that is excluded land because it's within a wetland. But the fact that you could rezone the whole site and have five acres means that it would be eligible. There are 54 units on there right now. It's in your RA zone. However, the issue is that 131 White Street is currently age restricted, meaning it's senior housing. And in order to make this into a MBTA communities compliant district, it would have to, you'd have to get rid of the age restriction because age restriction does not mean by right. So we'll keep on cruising. The next one, as I already mentioned, is your 40R district. And because this 40R was adopted prior to 2022, and I think it was, I tried to look, look back and see when it was adopted.
Yes, it was. It does predate to 2022.
Great. Yeah, because it predated, you can actually get credit for this. So there was a little blurb in the, in the guidelines that states that you can have the 25% affordability requirement. So without the 40R, the affordability requirement can only be up to 15% without something called an economic feasibility assessment. But with 40R, you can maintain that same affordability requirement on the site.
Now, so I'm just going to interrupt you for one second. I apologize. I just want to turn to the board. I dropped you all an email with a link to Nels' presentation as well. So I know it can be hard for us to get, because here, here in the meeting room, Nels, you haven't been here, but you're all the way on a, for us, you're on a back screen that's hard to see.
Okay.
So I just sent the link to the presentation to the board so they can also see it on their Chromebooks as well.
Good deal.
Okay, great.
Yeah, so this one's a little bit interesting just because it is already multifamily. The way it's currently zoned is at 22 units per acre, which is, you'll notice, above 15. It is at nine acres. So parts of this would be compliant as it is now. You would have to strike, you know, we did a first pass, but you just have to make sure that this district is by right housing. And so there is one provision in the 40R zoning that I think you would have to strike in order to make it by right. And that would be the, the note about the bedroom makeup. So the 20%, one bed, 70% two or more. So you have to strike that because you can't have any limitations on, on unit sizes in MBTA communities. But besides that, this district is okay. I also did the math. If you wanted to change this district up to 26 units per acre, you would also, that would be one way of achieving your capacity requirement of 240 units. So just two more. This site is in the southern end of Lunenburg. It is currently zoned office and office park and industrial. And this has 25 acres. So if you were to do 25 acres at 15 units an acre, you get to 376 units of capacity, which is of course over 240. I will note that there is an option where if you do a single parcel district, you can actually say that this district shall have no more than, and then input in your, your capacity. But as soon as you do multiple parcels, you can't have those caps. It's just something that they adopted as a kind of working practice, especially for these smaller communities that, for example, want to rezone an entire farm or some kind of larger site. But if you take all those acres and add them up, you get potentially much higher than your capacity number. So if you pick a single site like this, you can actually say, here, you know, we'll rezone this to 15 units per acre, but you know, maybe not the whole site or, or like I said, put on a cap for the number of acres that could be redeveloped. You know, obviously there's no housing there right now. It's, it's a green field. And the last option, this is on Rogers Way, so it's also existing multifamily. You'll notice that it's a rather large site. And again, if you were to pick just this one site, you could potentially have the option of saying, within here, you can build up to 240. And right now, there's 120. So those are the big ones that we looked at. There are a number of ways to kind of put these together in order to reach your capacity of 240. So, you know, one example would be that 37 Youngs Road at 26 units per acre. You could take 37 Youngs Road with the current zoning of 22 units per acre and add in another site at 15 units per acre. You could take either 40 Leominster Shirley or 1 through 9 Rogers Way and do it at 15 units per acre or 15 units per acre with a cap. These are all options that are available to you. So we're talking about it tonight. As Matt said, after this, there'll be some public info design meetings. I think we penciled in June 23rd, kind of circling back and talking about selecting one of the options. And then over the summer, Community Scale will support the town in drafting the compliant zoning district. And then there's going to be a number of steps that have to be taken to, like any other zoning amendment, get that ready for a special town meeting in November. So with that, I can take questions. We can bump around, look at different parts of this as you wish.
Okay. Nels, I have one or two. Regarding Rogers Way, did you, I was speaking with a building commissioner earlier day, earlier today, and he mentioned he thought a lot of that property might be wetland. Did you encounter that at all in your research?
We did not. So if it, if the, if the state considers it to be wetland, it would have shown up. So it's a little bit hard to tell, but all the, the white shaded areas are excluded. So that means that you can't have multifamily capacity on there. So it could be excluded because it's publicly owned, because there's wetlands, kind of like there was on, on this White Street. You know, there's a wetland back there in the wetland buffer. But there was no exclusions on Rogers Way.
Okay. Good to know. Thank you. I think that was my immediate one. And again, calling out for the board, 131 White Street, as Nels mentioned, is age restricted and that is, I believe, under the control of the Housing Authority. So that is, for multiple reasons, probably not soup, I mean, is it technically doable? Yes. For, it may not be likely, is not practically doable for us because of what the zoning changes would require for that property and the other groups involved. But I want to have some discussion now because, and we can get deeper later as well, but we have Nels available for questions. So certainly if we have questions or any other broad light discussion.
So these locations, just for purposes of reference, like we're not limited to those. We can come up with other, other suggestions from the public or from the board?
Yeah. So, Nels, that would be a good process question. Let's say we get into the weeds with the public and there's another idea floating out there that seems doable with baseline research from us. Can we loop back with you on that? Or is that not going to work with our constrained timeframe?
It's possible. So I would say that the, the hard part of these projects, and I think we've done almost 10 of these at this point, we've worked with communities, big and small, on rezoning to be MBTA community compliant. The, the actual authoring of the compliant zoning is pretty straightforward. The hard part is, is getting everyone on the same page because there's a lot of different ways you can, you can solve this puzzle for Lunenburg. You know, I mentioned that could be anywhere in the town. You could pick any number of districts or areas to basically be upzoned. And so what we found, working with other communities, is that sometimes it can be more palatable to pick a couple, you know, one or a couple of larger sites and have that be the focus of the discussion. Because these are the big multifamily housing areas that we've, were pointed to in Lunenburg. The other option, if you didn't want to say like, it's all going to be on this site, that that other communities have pursued, is to say like, this corridor. So we're going to upzone, you know, something like a commercial street or a bunch of small parcels and then have 15 units per acre across, you know, this, this other area. And that's actually been a little bit, how do I say this, more difficult to, to reach consensus around. So it is possible, but it's giving my warning. It can be harder to, harder to communicate.
Understood. All right. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay. I am, I am happy, personally, I am happy to see that we have an option listed in the presentation as 37 Youngs Road. Most of us in town would refer to it as Trittown. And seeing that we have an option for compliance, using only Trittown might end up being, my gut says, that could end up being a good avenue for us. I mean, because it's one choice, it's there. Being completely realistic, it is already developed enough that the odds of, I mean, I think the odds of broad redevelopment on any of these, like, I don't, I think the odds of redevelopment of Trittown would be very small. Some of these others would add more housing, but then again, they'd add housing of a variety we theoretically need in town. Other thoughts or questions while we have Nels?
I'm just wondering if he's worked with or represented any of the communities that have pushed back or rejected this zoning. There's, there seems to be more and more of them.
Yeah, sure. So we, we've worked with communities that were hesitant. So we worked with Wakefield and Wakefield rejected it the first time, the first time they tried to adopt, adopt the new zoning at town meeting. They weren't happy with the direction that it was taken. And so we worked with, worked with the town to pick a different district and then that passed the, the second time. And then we also worked with Duxbury down on the coast and they were, I think, waiting to see what would happen with the Milton case at that time and also rejected the, the plan as put forward. But now they're circling back and going to be going through adoptions as well. So yeah, we've, we've definitely suffered through, you know, some, some lengthy intemotionalist meetings, but I, I would say that for the communities that have passed it, focusing on a couple of sites that everyone can get behind has really been helpful.
All right. Thank you. And Glenn, I am on, signed up for Town Council's office hours next week to ask that question of Town Council as well. So we'll have a legal opinion representing what would be theoretically best for the town in that regard. And I prewired him on, that's the topic, so I believe he'll come in prepared. All right. Go ahead.
Does he have any feedback relative to the paper compliance is, is the model, your suggestion, correct? Typically, is that how that's categorized?
Yes. Trittown, 27 Youngs Road would be a likely example of what's called paper compliance. Paper compliance being, for those who aren't familiar with the term, where you're meeting the requirements in a way that is unlikely to cause any changes for the community. Now, nothing's a sure thing. But where MBTA communities is just a zoning change, it isn't a mandate to build. It's a mandate, it is just a mandate on the town to create zoning that has an option of what's considered medium density housing. In Lunenburg, we would view it as ultra dense. It isn't in the grand scheme, but compared to what we typically have in town, it is. And so you can't, you can't guarantee the future, right? But you can make choices that make it more or less likely. There are concerns out there about, and I shared them for a good long time, about if we don't do paper compliance, what would the impact be on things like the schools? The short answer thankfully is probably minimal, the housing developments of the type that they're looking for in MBTA communities. While they can have kids, you can have, have children in them, in practice, they do not tend to, developments of that density, especially in a town like Lunenburg, do not tend to increase the population of children and thus the burden on the schools by any significant amount. Because people with families coming to Lunenburg are awfully, often further on in life and more looking at the single family homes. Not universal, but more frequently. I, I think if you were asking my gut opinion, I would want paper compliance right now. I see some options here that I think could be very good for further development in town, including for us to consider with more dense housing. I mean, being frank, on Leominster Shirley Road, that's potentially a real nice location with a straight shot to the Shirley train and road going into Shirley and Leominster, hence the name. However, I look at that part of town, one is, it's industrial. I hate to take industrial land and put houses on it, industrially zoned land, just because you could potentially pull in more tax revenue through industrial uses in the long run. But also that area could potentially in the future be ripe for a mixed use development, where you have more dense development, commercial and residential, that would then be close to new jobs coming in in the industrial area, also easy shot to the commuter rail. That's something I look at. It's a style of development we don't have in town that could be both lifestyle wise and for tax purposes, very beneficial. But my understanding, and Nels, please correctly, correct me if I'm wrong, is you can't, effectively, you can't really do mixed use development with MBTA communities or not without a significant penalty. Do I understand that correctly?
You can have up to 25% of the capacity be associated with what's called a mixed use district that would allow, that would require ground floor commercial. But then it gets a little more complicated where you're making multiple zones. So it is, it is possible, but you can't do it for, can't do it for all your capacity, only, only a portion of it.
Okay. So that was roughly my interest. I knew that 25% number. I didn't know how it played in, if it was 25% total or how.
Yeah, we did that in, in Malden and, because they were rezoning their downtown right around a subway station. And they, you know, rightly wanted to have commercial on the, on the ground floor right around, you know, right in their downtown. And so figuring out which, which blocks are going to be part of the mixed use, which blocks are going to be just multifamily by right, it was, it was a pretty arduous process.
Okay. That's good to know. Like I said, my gut says for the long, I don't have a study to back this up, but my gut says for the long-term development, looking in the, looking forward in the town, mixed use on Leominster Shirley could be a real benefit because then we'd have businesses that would benefit from, well, from the traffic on Leominster Shirley Road, both existing and what could come in from those businesses, because we'd pull, be pulling directly from multiple towns. both existing and what could come in from those businesses, because we'd pull, be pulling directly from multiple towns. Um, in a pretty easy commute to get them into Lunenburg to spend their dollars. And then also having maybe some of that, uh, being a mixed-use development, then having apartments or something that would be above or intermixed with however they want to do it, the commercial would then give, um, housing that's probably on the more affordable side. I hate to use the word affordable because affordable housing is a discreet thing in Massachusetts, right? So not affordable housing, but housing that is affordable. Um, but having more of housing that is affordable would be useful. It would potentially give for some of our younger residents who kind of, maybe they go right into the workforce, potentially in the industrial area. Or they're going off to college, come back, maybe they're commuting into Boston. Then we ha- kind of have a section of town there that could appeal to them, potentially housing at a lower price point, walkable to some amenities. It's a lifestyle that we don't offer right now in Lunenburg, and that's a place we could maybe put it that would, in my vision, would not significantly impact the rural character of the town. But that, I mean, you're listening to one man's thoughts, and the point is in the end, we want it to be community thoughts.
Is there any feedback from the, our consultant here on the fact that this is a mandate from the state for us to zone, change the zoning to allow for the two-hundred-and-forty units, family-friendly units, meaning more than, you know, one bedroom, several-bedroom units? The paper compliance, does he have any guidance or feedback from the state on the communities that have adopted the paper compliance? Because that seems to be illogical. If they're, if they're mandating this on a communities like Lunenburg, why would it be okay that we essentially skirt the law? Like, does he see any, you know, what, I guess my question would be what next? And and to be clear, and as at previous meetings, I do not support this, this law. I think it's an intrusion on the local, uh, community's authority over zoning. Just the, the court has made it clear, the state has the authority, but that doesn't necessarily mean that I have to like it. But I do, I do appreciate the fact they have the authority and that we have to deal with this. But I'm wondering, you know, with them having that well-established authority, are we basically putting our nose to them with this paper compliance?
Yeah, so Nels, that goes to, that goes to you. Um, and I would also add, do we feel if we went with that Youngs Road as well, we'll call it Trytown in town? But that Youngs Road location, if we went that way, are we, one, potentially looking at future issues with the state? And two, I guess my question would be, I don't know if you could answer this. My gut set, I mean, the twenty-six per, units per acre is pretty dense. My gut says that would still remain paper compliance, but do you, if you have an opinion, and I don't know that you do, would that potentially put us at risk for Trytown being redeveloped en masse?
Yeah, uh, maybe, like, I'll take that question first. Um, I don't know if anyone on the board was on the board when that was getting permitted. But, well, something that stuck out to me is that they had eligible compliance up to, um, I think it, it said on the, it says in the zoning, you know, not more than two-hundred-and-four dwelling units. Um, but they only built a hundred-and-thirty-one. Um, so they, they already left seventy on the table. Does anyone remember why that might have been?
I'm sorry, I didn't, I couldn't hear that question.
So when Trytown, Trytown zoning currently allows two-hundred-and-four, um, two-hundred-and-four units, but they only built a hundred-and-thirty-one. Does anyone remember why they didn't build as many as they could, a- as many as they were allowed to?
Uh, one member of the board who was on the board when Trytown was conceived is not here this evening. So I I don't think, unless someone in the room happens to have knowledge about Trytown and wants to share, I didn't think so, but I wanted to t- reach out for that. So I don't have a good answer for you there. I don't know what the impetus was. That's something I can get very easily tomorrow, but I don't have it tonight.
Okay. Yeah, I just, for me, the fact that they're not, they weren't maximizing what they could have built, um, under the, under the current zoning makes me feel like it would potentially be unlikely if they were given even more capacity that they would, they would take it. Um, but who knows? Um, things could change. Um, so I guess in that way, you know, th- there would be more capacity. Whether, whether they use it or not would be left, you know, for, for some time in the future. Regarding how the state is feeling about paper compliance, I think there's a, there's a couple of things going on. One is that they really like the communities that have added real capacity, and they are making a number of grants available to help build infrastructure to support, um, housing units that are in in compliant districts that are actually adding capacity. So those, those towns are getting gold stars and and funding to support that. On the other hand, with the, the more paper compliance, I think it's happened a little more than they expected. A lot of communities have taken, taken that route. In some places where we worked, especially right around existing, uh, transit stations where the, the housing was required to go, some level of paper compliance was almost inevitable because they'd already built a lot of housing right around their train station. And so if you're going to make a multifamily district around the train station, that's going to include some multifamily, which they've already built. And so the way that I've been communicating it to communities that we work with is, you know, in some places, you've already done the hard work. And so, you know, you might call it paper compliance, but it could also be considered getting credit for what you've done in the past. So, yeah, there's definitely, there's benefits, um, even financial benefits for, for adding real capacity. But, you know, there's, there's two sides to it.
All right, there we go. Any other questions for Nels this evening? Seeing none, I am going to turn to the public and just ask if you have any questions for us or for our con- uh, for our contractor tonight. I see none. I see no hands in Zoom, but I, all right, in that case, if we're all set, I'll let, we can let Nels go and get on to the rest of our meeting.
Okay, it was great. So, um, look forward to seeing you next time and and going over more of these, uh, options in detail.
Uh, I'm sorry, could you repeat that, Nels?
I'll see you next time.
Okay. And I'll be, I may be in contact with a few questions going forward. Thank you so much for your help.
You're very welcome.
Take care. I am going to say, that makes me, that reframing makes me feel better. That paper compliance is another way of saying you've already done the work, get credit. And knowing that Trytown's already zoned real close to what the max would be regardless. And that, I mean, that tells me it's likely a demand issue, so we'll see. But I li- I feel better about paper compliance even when it's thought of that way. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wonder what's next.
I I hear Rumblings Estate might be looking at minimum lot sizes, so. We'll find out. All right. So that is, um, Zoning Options for MBTA Communities Act. Next up, we have public hearings. We have three scheduled tonight, sixty-three Lancaster Ave, scenic road alteration, ten-eighty-three Northfield Road, special permit for common driveway, stormwater manage, and a stormwater management permit. And one-hundred Townsend Harbor Road for stormwater management permit. Now, ten-eighty-three Northfield Road for the common driveway and stormwater has requested a continuance. So, um, we're going to look at best practice in a moment and if we're going to. I think we're most likely just not even going to open it since they've asked for the continuance and will re-advertise because we're missing a board member and I don't want to accidentally trigger Mullen Rule or something. I, I don't know the exact details there. I play a little more cautious. But again, if you tuned in at home for ten-eighty-three Northfield Road, uh, they have requested a continuance. We will not be seeing them tonight. But let's, uh, hit them in order. Sixty-three Lancaster Ave, scenic road alteration.
Okay, the Lunenburg Planning Board will hold a joint public hearing with the tree warden on May twelfth, twenty-twenty-five at six oh five P M. Town Hall seventeen Main Street, Lunenburg, Mass. To hear and review an application for scenic road alteration pursuant to M G L Chapter forty fifteen C by Dave Clappam on behalf of Unitil for removal of a large dying sugar maple tree, including sump grinding and replanting with a new tree, sugar maple tree near Unitil Pole Eight. Subject property information, the location is sixty-three Lancaster Avenue. Assessor's map seventy-one, parcel number twenty-two. Owner is Robert Gibbons, sixty-three Lancaster Avenue, Lunenburg, Mass. Uh, you can view materials online at lunenburgma dot portal dot opengov dot com slash search with record ID P B S R dash twenty-five dash one via an email request to the planning office, planning@lunenburgma.gov, or in person at the planning office at nine sixty Mass Avenue.
Great, thank you. I'll have you start in one second. What I do want to double check is, um, Bill, you're here, you're our tree warden. Is there a, um, is there a specific format we should be following tonight for this that you're aware of? Or just what we usually do for scenic roads?
I would just use your regular format.
My hearing is awful tonight. I am, it's not you. Oh. Yeah, you gotta be in the microphone anyway, I realize.
So Bill, but I'm a tree warden. I would use your regular format.
Okay, great, wonderful. Um, thank you. And please introduce yourself and take it away.
I'm Dave Clappam, the Unitil Forestry Supervisor for, uh, Pittsburgh District. And I'm looking to remove one tree, uh, along the scenic road.
Okay. Let's hear about the tree.
It's a, it's got some history. Twenty nineteen, we went through the pu- public hearing to try and remove the, the same tree. The select board was on board with it, the planning board was not. So we did not remove the tree. And then since then, it's decayed even more, and it's caused at least one, maybe two more, more outages over the time. It keeps dropping huge limbs, um, both on the lines and and onto the, the land that it's co- it kind of sits on the property boundary of sixty-three and the, um, the outline of the, um, scenic road, so.
Okay. Going to look into our files to see what we have quick. Um, and we do have photographs available. So, Bill, do you have thoughts on this or info you want to share?
Sure. I looked at the tree today and, uh, like Dave explained, it, it's in tough shape. But there was a pile of logs sitting there from branches that had fallen recently. So, um, if it was up to me, I would take it down. I, I would, I believe it's a hazardous tree.
All right, thank you. I, while we take a moment, we can take a moment to, um, review the plans and everything as well, but it looks like we have members of the public who would also like to speak. So let's hear some thoughts. And so when you come up, um, just share your name and address and tell us what you want us to hear.
I may please the planning board, Robert Gibbons. I'm the owner at sixty-three Lancaster. Thank you for your assistance so far. Thank you for your input. Uh, we've only been at the property for about two, three years. That was my toddler that was in here earlier and stuff. The pile of wood that you saw was something I just organized the other day. I wasn't sure if it needed to stay there. As, I guess, evidence of what's been going on. We have seen major limbs fall every snow season, more particularly as it kind of just builds up from, uh, the dump that takes place every winter. And it does look like there's dead wood up in the canopy. There is, um, cavities that just look, I mean, this is more your expertise, but it definitely, um, has caused concern for us. Uh, we don't, we're not playing by the front of the road because just we have the toddler and stuff, but we have a, a ton of neighbors and stuff that use that sidewalk there. And neighbors that have lived here, June and Al, who live across three fifty years, have always been concerned that it's going to land on one of these days. So I think just more than anything that we share is that there is a present danger to the public. And for what it's worth, I practice as a social security disability attorney, and you might not think these things happen, but it happens more than I like to see. So, um, you know, again, for whatever that's worth, I, I do think that it would be in the best interest of all. We think it's beautiful, obviously. We love the drive. We wish people would slow down a little more to enjoy the drive, but that's for another day. Um, but if you guys would, we would really appreciate it. But of course, we'll, you know, take your opinion on it, but thank you.
Great.
Good.
Thank you very, yep.
All right, thank you everybody.
So I'm going to, I, I know I have a few questions, but, um, actually, I, I do have a procedural one. Do we, don't we re- uh, require plans for a scenic road tree removal?
Not to my knowledge. Um, the existing, uh, specifications for the scenic road process are largely in the bylaw, and it's, it's quite sparse, actually.
Okay, I, I, I thought we had, I mean, we're here now, so I'm not going to stress this. I thought it might be our, it might not be in the bylaw, it might be in our, whatever you call our practices documented.
The rules and regs.
Yeah, the rules and regs for the board. That, because I, I know that in the past, for tree removals, we've required a plot with all the trees marked off that are be, that are there for the removal. In this case, we're talking about one tree in an obvious location.
Right.
I'm not personally as worried. I can't speak for the rest of the board. But, um, I, and this is more of a thought and concern going forward to make sure. So I have a, a couple tree-ish questions, but I'll turn to the board as well. I speak an awful lot.
Um, most of it, as, as far as I can see, it seems pretty straightforward. I don't have any, as of this point, I don't have any objections.
Okay. Um, I, I have one potential concern with the characterization of the tree, and I'm very open to being, uh, educated differently on this. Uh, for, is it a sugar maple?
Yes.
Okay. Um, because to my, now, I am not an arborist. I am a big sugar maple fan. Um, I tap my own trees. Sugar maples can be dang hollow and shedding limb, I mean, so sugar maples do rot out inside. Uh, if you're driven by my house and see the big sugar maples, at least one of them's, that is hollow inside. Um, it's a, it's the nature of that tree. They also shed limbs, I mean, they shed their old limbs a whole bunch too. So I guess my question would be, knowing this is a tree that when the inside appears rotten and when dropping large limbs can still be a very healthy tree, not at risk of falling, what makes this one different?
So I understand what you're saying. You can have a tree that's biolog- biologically healthy as, as far as green leaves, mostly, um, upper canopy intact, but structurally unzound, which is the rot and, um, a bunch of limbs dying off and breaking down. What's happening is this tree is kind of on its end of its life, so it's in what's called retention. It's when it brings all of its growth more to its center and tries to capr- uh, save the, the inner of the, of the branches and sheds off the outside branches. Which is fine if it's in a wood setting, woody setting or out in a field where you have a walkway, the sidewalk rather, and it's the center of town. It kind of opens you up more for, um, likelihood of impact as far as cars were driving down the road, the lines that we can't move, um, people walking by. If that makes any sense.
All right. Okay, other questions from the board? Thoughts?
I have thoughts, no questions, but I, I see, I'm a big tree person, right? I cry when I have to cut a tree down, so I'm that person. But when you look- But when you look at the picture that was sent in, half of the limbs up top have no new growth on them. And so that actually made me really sad to hear that it tries to go in. I get a little emotional. But looking at the trunk itself, there's kind of like a large hole right at the bottom. So like, they hollow out, right? That makes sense. But the way it's leaning, it's kind of like on this, the tiniest little incline, like maybe a foot high. And I worry that if the rot or the emptiness right there continues, it's gonna be unstable, and it's already leaning towards the road. And you're right, there is cars going by, there's the power lines, absolutely, but there's also a sidewalk. And so I've had, I have some old trees on my property, and the limbs fall down, and they're in the middle of the street in the storm, and it's terrifying, and it's super loud. And I can't imagine if somebody's walking by and gets hit by a limb. So I don't understand why it was turned down to be cut down. I don't think I was on the board the first time it came.
2019.
Yeah. That was before I lived in Lunenburg.
I wasn't on the board then either. And six years can be a big difference in tree life.
Sure, yeah. I just see, you know, I see it on my own property, and my trees are a lot smaller than this, and they still cause quite a lot of damage. So I'm definitely in favor of taking it down. It's being replaced by the same caliber of tree. Of course, it's gonna take a long time for it to grow to that size. That sucks about trees, but nothing you can do about that.
I was gonna ask about that. I missed that. It is being?
Yeah, there will be a replacement.
Oh, that makes me, I was worried I was gonna have to push for that because that's something I'm real passionate about, because if we don't replace trees in the right-of-way on scenic roads, they'll just eventually no longer be scenic as one by one they're pared down.
Yeah, and it's a sugar maple that's being replaced.
Okay, I missed that.
One for one.
All right. Yeah, I wish I had driven out to see the tree, but I made that mistake today, so, great. And Bill, you said that you're also in agreement about the nature of the tree?
Yes, I am.
Okay. All right, then I would, great, that said, we would have to, any other public comment? I kind of informally said that, but let me be more overt. Any other public comment in the room or out in the internet world? Seeing none? Again, if you're online, just raise your hand if you want to speak. We're easygoing. We would have to close the hearing, and then after closing the hearing, we would have to hold a vote for, to approve the removal of the tree on scenic road to be replaced with a similar as appropriate tree. So does that sound good to everyone?
Yeah.
Great. Okay, I would look for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing is closed. Do, I would look for potentially a motion to approve the removal of the tree as designated in the public hearing to be replaced in the public right-of, in the scenic road right-of-way with a tree as similar as able and appropriate.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, there we go.
Thank you for your time.
Do you happen to have a card, by the way?
I can get one. I'll run to the truck and grab one.
I'm sorry?
I'll run to my vehicle and grab one.
Oh, great. I have a, I would love if we could approve, just while I have you here. Public hearing's done. This has been decided. For those who are here for this, it's not rude to get up and leave if you're happy with the business, if you don't have other business. I would love to create a better line of communication between us and Unitil because I feel that there's been tree work done on some of our scenic roads that in the planning board hasn't heard about it ahead of time. And we have it for the tree removal, but there's been some more edge cases. I'd love it if we could chat at some point and make sure we're on the same page with that.
Sure.
Great, thanks. So if you don't mind bringing the card up later, I'd appreciate it.
No problem.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Great, Bill, thank you so much.
You're welcome. And I'd like to attend that meeting you have with Dave, so we're all on the same page.
Great, okay, that would be, I think that'd be super. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Great. Oh, man. Hate to approve the cutting of a sugar, that's, sugar maples are my tree. That's my soul right there, but.
I mean, if you guys need a silence or something.
I seriously could cry listening about the tree.
Right. Okay, so, Logan, you and I talked about the potential of opening 1083 and then just moving to close it so that we would not have to, well, you know what? Again, no one's here for 1083. Let's have this discussion on best practice afterward.
Sure.
Because instead, we can move right in for 100 Townsend Harbor Road. Like, we've got people who are here for active business. Let's take care of it.
The Lunenburg Planning Board will hold a public hearing on May 12th, 2025 at 6:05 PM, Town Hall 17 Main Street, Lunenburg, Mass. to hear and review an application for stormwater management permit pursuant to 204-1D of the Code of the Town of Lunenburg by Stephen R. Stafford and Peter M. Stafford for development of single-family homes on each of five lots previously created through the approval not required A&R process. Subject property information, the location is 100 Townsend Harbor Road, assessors map 49, parcel number 74, lots 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. Owner is Stephen R. Stafford at 100 Townsend Harbor Road, Lunenburg, Mass. You can view materials online at lunenburgma便开的网站上， with record ID PBSW-25-2 via email request to the planning office, planning@lunenburgma.gov, or in person at the planning office at 960 Mass. Avenue in Lunenburg, Mass.
Great, thank you.
From positioning, I didn't know if the audience wanted to see. If there's gonna be a.
Okay, I would, you know, we, yeah, so I do need you at the microphone, just so it's recorded and so people at home can hear you as well. Actually, Logan, could we, could we screen share some version of that plan?
Yes.
That, so what'll happen is you can have that pointed at us. Okay, well, if, everything you're showing us is included in the files we already have, right? So Logan can call them up on the screen.
Perfect.
Our friends in the audience can see them, and our friends at home can see them as well.
Okay. My name is Michael Lasala. I'm from Topper Land Survey here on behalf of the applicant. And one change, the applicant is now the owner of the property that had, the purchase had gone through. As you know, this was before your board highlighted and read is the overall property was 9.15 acres. An A&R was presented last fall, approved by this board, and subsequently was recorded at the Registry of Deeds. And then this property was in 61A. It went before the town for first right of refusal for ownership. That was declined, so now we've moved forward with the actual development of the lots. So what we have here is 9.1 acres. There's an area of wetland to the south. You can give me bearings. The locust map here, Mass. Ave, Townsend Harbor Road on the way to Hickory Hills. So this is on Townsend Harbor Road on the easterly side of it as you're heading towards Hickory Hills. Logistically, there's an open field, approximately 4.2 acres of cleared field that's been used for a hay field for a long time. And the rest of it is, the perimeter is primarily wooded with stone walls around the perimeter. There's breaks along the stone wall along Townsend Harbor Road. There's 1.23 acres of wetland area, and then subsequent, the 30-foot no-touch zone, the 50-foot no-build zone ends up putting another 2.2 and 1/2 acres basically of restricted area on the property. So that's kind of the overview. Kind of just flip over. This is our, the same orientation, same perimeter, but this has now been overlaid with, the boulder lines are the soil classifications, you know, the Class A, Class B, Class C soils. We've added topography to it, and the blue areas are the drainage areas that we've divided the property into based on the topography. There's a high knoll in the center of the property, and it basically goes in four directions. We have an area that goes to the north, an area that goes to the south towards the wetlands. There's an area that goes towards the street, towards an existing catch basin, and then there's an area that goes to the abutting property north and ultimately goes to an existing catch basin in the street. Another portion of the drainage area that we've excluded because it's primarily within buffer zone, 100-foot buffer zone, 50-foot no structure, 30-foot disturbances at the back. There's about 2 and 1/2 acres in the back. It's basically separated by a stone wall. Soil testing has been done on the property for five lots. The areas are identified with these little circles here, 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 and here. And that's really what drove the lot orientation. We had two, a reduced frontage lot, one, standard frontage lots 2 and 3, another reduced lot, 4, and then a full frontage lot, 5. So the lot frontages basically cut around where we could place the onsite septic systems, which to my understanding have been approved from the Shova. We had submitted septic plans to them subsequently, concurrently with this submittal. Townsend Harbor Road has town water, so these are gonna be proposed connections to town water. Stormwater management plan that we have before us, the existing field, the sea soils, the high, there's a high water table ranging from the wetland areas basically at the surface to the high point, we're about 2 and 1/2 feet at the top. But basically, the average throughout the site is 2 feet or less to groundwater. So what we ended up having is elevated sewage disposal systems for the groundwater setback. And as a result, we elevated houses and were proposing drive-under homes for each of those, taking advantage of the grading and just condense the development. We've proposed primarily working within the existing field with minimal clearing. One of the lots, Lot 1, to have the driveway within the frontage. We're carving in an area there, but pretty much we're able to work with, within the existing cleared areas. Now, on site, again, like I said, we are at, individually, there's five lots here. Individually, each lot only has about a half an acre of disturbance on it, but combined total is 2.4 acres, so it's a common plan. We're triggered into the stormwater permit because we're more than an acre. The development of the lots 4 and 5, Lot 4, we're able to keep outside the 100-foot buffer. Our wetland consultant, Matt Murrow, had done the wetland installation last summer, and this was one of the lots where like, this doesn't need to be filed. But this one, he was recommending we do a request for determination because we're able to keep actually the disturbance, the closest is our footing drain, which is gonna be 75 feet to the wetland. So what we've done with our development, it's technically not a low-impact development, but we've been able to cluster the project within the existing clearing of the field. And how we've addressed our stormwater, I'll kind of flip back and you kind of see the difference with our drainage area approach. We had four drainage areas, one north, one south, one towards the street, and then kind of northwest. What we've done is reduce this drainage area that's coming out to the street towards the catch basin and kind of diverted it based on where the septic systems, they, we basically ended up creating a dam along the front. We've directed the water to run out to the wetland areas in the back. So here, what we've done, we've reduced the drainage area to the north. We've reduced the drainage area to the other property on the north, and we've dramatically reduced what's coming right out of this Townsend Harbor Road. What we're proposing is country drainage, directing the grading. The septic system pretty much directed the flow because we have a large fill areas, and we just redirected the driveways, the runoff towards the wetland. So it's gonna be sheet globe country drainage. Each of the driveways, we're proposing a high point at the property line, and we graded the driveways such that runoff, like particularly on this lot, does not come out to the street. It goes internally to the site, cross-country, through the trees, across the lawn areas. Likewise, that same approach has been utilized.
Oh, sorry. Do, yeah. No, don't, please, don't be. Yep.
I could hear the ringing in my ear. So what we've done with all of our roof drains, our footing drains, we've directed them in a manner away from the street, internal into the site. Because of the water table, we've elevated all the foundations, drive under, basically slab-on-grade, and the foundation of the house is gonna act as retaining wall on the front side, and we're gonna be filling around. The applicants are in the earth-moving business, earth-removal business. They have, it's, that was my question to them was, you want me to go up with material or spread it out? How would you like these lots of them? I go, this is naturally inclined for drive unders, fill systems like you see throughout town, the helicopter pad. But here, by elevating these up, you can blend the house and make it look like it's part of the landscape versus just kind of with a repair, you usually end up having the eyesore of the helicopter landing pad. So on the, what we've done with the homes, again, the roof leaders, I've depicted directing into the various drainage areas away from the street. We've done drainage cals for the pre and post-development, and there's reductions, obviously, because we're reducing the areas going to the street. The area that's, has a slight increase is towards the back, towards the wetlands, towards the larger wetland system, which ultimately flows into this, ultimately to the street system south. The approach that, I know that a typical, in Lunenburg, with your bylaws, first is LID is the requirement, while not meeting the strict definitions of LID. It's still keeping in the spirit of LID in the sense that we're utilizing reduced frontage lots, we're working existing cleared areas, and we're kind of condensing the development. And with LID typically, especially with stormwater, with the credits is, the Stormwater Handbook has credits 1, 2, and 3. One is no compliance. I mean, you restrict your property 25%. Here, just the natural lay of the land, where the wetlands are, we already restricted at 27%. So it's, it's, we don't have a D restriction on it per se, but the wetlands are creating the restriction on the property already. A lot of places, you're probably used to seeing people place infiltrators in the ground to catch, put in a drywall. But in this instance here, those, all those devices, there's a depth to them. Rain gardens, there's a depth to them for treatment, 2 feet. Here, our water table is at 2 feet or less. Infiltration structures per DEP are not to be placed in fill. So the only way, we're gonna be violating that principle. The septic systems is a different animal in that that's a low-flow situation. We're used to that. You put it up, fill, you just hit your kitchen sink, your toilet flushes, your shower. But stormwater is a different animal, and just the intensity and the volumes, when you place fill, you're more likely to have issues, blowouts, like we've seen in other places in the country, even in Leamester, when you have confined stormwater into an underground area that can't contain it, it becomes an issue. But the handbook specifically states to never place infiltration structures within fill and in C/D soils, which we have on the property. And then what we've generated on this plan as well, we depict for each of the driveways as a construction entrance. We propose erosion control. We propose erosion control measures at the edge of each of the developments with this grading that could potentially impact sediment and silt out into the wetlands or out into the street. We've also, because it's 2.4 acres, it's technically NIPDs because it's greater than an acre, so we've formulated our plan notes accordingly, our details, best practices along that line.
Okay.
So I'll leave it at that if there's any questions.
Okay. Few logistical ones, just process wise and everything first. Now, we do not yet have a peer review on this, correct?
No.
So let's, is the, this is a, this is a stormwater. I know frequently the board would like to see peer review on a stormwater. I, I certainly would on this, just to make sure I understand everything and that we have a professional look, double checking everything for the town. So we'll want to talk about that. Otherwise, I'm, I'm processing everything still because I understand everything you said and I get the, I mean, the use of country drainage makes double sense with that high water table. We'll get into some, we'll have public comment in a moment and we have an email to read in as well. But I know there's some concerns about water flowing onto other properties. So you may already be aware of those concerns from abutters, but I'm sure that's something you're going to want to address as well. Being realistic, where the board, it looks like is very like, I'm getting the nods that looks like we're going to want peer review, so that we won't be able to wrap this tonight. Okay. Do we have comments or questions from the board first or do we want to go into public Got your thinking face on, Tim.
I, it's just a question here, Lot Five, I'm not sure what our normal, I don't remember exactly where the work is actually going into the 100 foot buffer zone. Is that something that we normally have an issue with?
Like is, I think, is ConCon the one who addresses that? So I, the town, so the town currently does not have a planner. We're, we're getting some interim help in.
Okay.
But because of that, we're going to play a little, you're going to catch us playing a little bit more cautious baseball than we might normally because we want to make sure that we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's. So.
So here we are, your bylaws have a 30 foot no, no touch, no disturb.
Yep.
Which we're respecting. And then there's a 50 foot no structure. So here, this is the 30 foot no touch and then this is the 50 foot no structure. Our, our closest point actually is here. We're showing erosion control along there. So this is sheet flow. The, the theory will, the, the DEP typically, if you are 50 feet or more from a resource area, you can usually go an abbreviated notice of intent and full blown notice of intent if you're within that 50 foot corridor. Here, we're 75 feet, which is why we, our, our wetland consultant recommended we just go for an RFD or an abbreviated notice of intent for that. So this would be probably the only lot that goes before the conservation commission.
Yep.
And what we have here is basically after all the disturbance on the lot, you're going to have 75 feet of vegetation, grass, trees, because we're respecting the existing tree line, which is in, shaded in brown here. And it, that tree line pretty much almost follows on this particular lot, the 30 foot no touch. So it's a good line of demarcation for site work.
All right, great.
Thank you.
Anything else from the board? We do have public here and I'm guessing there's some public comment. So what I'd like to do is welcome some public comment. Great. So please come on up, share with us your name and address and happily state your piece.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ralph Swick. My wife, Janine, and I own and reside at 113 Townsend Harbor Road. So are directly across from what's indicated as lots two and three on the diagram. I wanted to reassure myself that you were aware of the local terrain issues right there on the eastern side of Townsend Harbor Road. I have some photographs if they would help you.
Yeah.
Yeah. Exactly. If the technology allows, I might even be able to screen share them. It's up to you. I have, I have paper copies and.
Paper, paper copies would be great and then be, and then if you could also send along, it'd be easier if you sent along the digital to you, correct?
Yes, sure.
Okay. So for viewing tonight by the board, paper copies would be great. It would be really helpful if you could then send those files to Logan O'Connell, our administrative assistant, because anything we review here has to go into the public record.
Absolutely happy, happy to do that, so.
Thank you.
It's a, it's a double sided page, so just one, one piece of paper each.
Grab you one as well, Logan, so you have it handy.
Yeah. I save paper, but unfortunately not printer ink. Okay. So, so first I'll ask you to look at the side with just the one photograph. This is from my driveway, looking across Townsend Harbor Road into where I believe the map shows that the new driveway for Lot Three is, is proposed. And what I wanted to assure myself of was that you were aware of the, of the bank, the, that's on the eastern side of Townsend Harbor Road there. And, and, and what I wanted to, you to be aware of, and on the opposite side are, are photographs of, of that, of that area of the bank on the east side of, of Townsend Harbor Road. The, in the lower picture, the, the road sign, the speed limit sign is, is just to, just to the right of, of my driveway on the, on the other side. So my, my issue that I wanted to make sure you were aware of is when that driveway is cut into that bank, that the flow off of that, that knoll there where the trees are, I, you know, I'm concerned that that flow will infiltrate Townsend Harbor Road. Currently it doesn't there. I'm not aware that there's been an issue before. Now there's a, I understand there's a catch basin down, down further south, but there has not been stormwater flow onto Townsend Harbor Road. But when that bank is cut, I'm concerned that there, there might be. So since the applicant is here for a waiver of storm management bylaw properties, I wanted to make sure you were aware of our concern that, that cutting that bank down for the driveway may, may change the floor there. Thank you.
Now, the applicant's not here for a waiver. They're here, the stormwater permit. So would that mean?
But the request for the permit includes a waiver of certain provisions.
Okay, okay, great. No, we're on the same page then. Super. Okay. Well, let's do twofold. I can tell you that as part of our peer review, that's some of the things that will be looked at. Peer review being when the, and I see Mike online, did you see your hand up as well? We will get to you. We will, so what the applicant, I say the town will hire, but the applicant pays the engineer the town uses to make sure that everything they're claiming that that engineer agrees with. And if the engineer feels there's something that would be more protective to the town and its residents, they'll bring that up. But we do have a member of the public here with some concern about water now moving onto the road post development. I'm betting you could talk about what's being done explicitly to mitigate that.
Correct.
So I'll ask you to then come to the microphone again so they can hear you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Great. Mrs. Swick, thank you. Please.
Yeah. As I was saying, the pre-development area, I'll just kind of give some numbers. It's one, almost 1.6 acres draining currently towards, towards Townsend Harbor. We've reduced that by half. So we've, the way the drainage area is graded right now, existing is coming out to the street. The tributary area, we've reduced, we've cut it in half. We've cut that entire portion out and redirected back into the site.
Okay. Now, are you doing anything to keep the runoff off the driveway? I, I know it could be different in this circumstance because you can't go down like you might normally see.
But here, here we're proposing high points at the driveway, right at the property line. So there's a, the only portion of the driveway that's draining into the street is from the right of way out to the bank.
Okay.
So we've done a little, little, little.
Got it.
High, high spot there, knowing the water table's high, any earth removal, anything we cut, it's going to be problematic. So again, and that was the other reason why we wanted to direct the roof gutters, most of the footing drains are directed away, respecting where the septic systems are going to be located, obviously.
Okay, great. And we'll have, and again, we'll have peer review as well. So we have to make sure, do not let me forget to have us vote on that tonight so the applicant can move forward in a timely manner. All right. And we have Mike online with his hand up. Mike, you can go ahead and share with us your full name, your address and share your
Hi, everyone. I'm Mike Rash, 74 Townsend Harbor Road. I'm just south of this field. I just want to address that I know myself and the neighbors behind me, as we speak, we have standing water in our basements. Just the, it's the static groundwater. It's, it's risen. I believe it's due to the building that went in on Two Way, Danny Proctor's building. So I really just want to, want to just get this on record that it's, the static water level's already risen and kind of, you know, just, I'm not worried about the surface water runoff, but I'm, I'm worried about the, the static groundwater level rising even more and to just like to kind of see, you know, what, what, what kind of plans they have to keep the actual groundwater from rising up because as I said, myself and my neighbors all have standing water in our basement as we speak.
All right. Thank you. And I didn't catch the direction from the property, but you were gesturing, so it looks like, okay, it is sound.
He's here.
Okay.
So his property.
You got to speak at the microphone. I know. Perfect.
Do that. Mr. Rash's property has, there's a large wetland system, even on his property, and there's a larger wetland system there. So the, the design that we've done here is the typical, again, like I said, country drainage. When you do stormwater, when you do a stormwater detention basin, if you do infiltration structures, you are confining flow into a particular area. Here, we are trying to disperse the water as it currently does. Right now, the proposed impervious coverage for this entire lot post-development is 6%. So it's, it's not a lot.
Okay.
From, from, from a perspective of development. And we're trying to respect the, the surface water directions. And obviously this area, I was concerned with having that knoll and, and yeah, there is, there's a, the speed limit sign here and it's just at the crest of the hill. And that's kind of how, we kind of wanted to tuck that driveway in to minimize the cut, cut and fill and obviously for, for site distance coming out of that driveway.
Okay. And so you, you're not notably changing the flow or are you notably changing the flow in the direction to, to the south?
We, we are directing internally, we're elongating the flow paths across the lawn areas. We're re, by having these elevated septic systems, it forces the water instead of coming this way, it elongates it and it encourages more infiltration. Now, I can't model that.
No.
Specifically. And again, with the water table being what it is, I'm really limited in what devices and what approaches that we can do. So again, it's, it's pretty much controlling how we did our grading and where, how we're directing, if that makes sense.
No, it does. All right. Thank you. Looking for other public comment.
Good evening. My name's Dave Stafford. I own the property at 100 Townsend Harbor, which is directly across from the Lot Four driveway. I commend you on what you're trying to do here. I have some concerns having gone over all of the information. I'm still trying to assimilate myself. This, Analysis Point Three, which is a catch basin that the town put in 20 years ago? Do you have any recollection? 20 years ago? Ever since that went in, my lot has gotten wet and stayed wet into the spring. I grew up at the lot that's now the, actually that's outdated, 89 Townsend Harbor, grew up there. So this parcel was always a garden. This opens up, this is a very narrow area of frontage. It opens up into a much larger parcel, it's 16 acres, that also bears all the runoff from this wetland through a system that goes under the, through Mike Rash's yard, under the road and a culvert, down the 89 Townsend Harbor hill and then into my parcel. It's a significant sized wetland back there. Ultimately, the water that goes there feeds into Hickory Hills Lake. I have a couple of concerns because even though I see what you're doing here about trying to keep water on the property, in my review so far of the plans, I don't see noticeable contour line changes that shows water flow that's going to go this way. Specifically, when I look at the Lot Four plan, I don't really see changes here. I'm concerned if you're already channeling all the water to this, I don't know what you call it.
The driveway going out to Lot Four.
Right. But basically this is a low spot here that leads over to the wetland.
Which we're respecting, which would.
Which will channel the water.
Which is, which we're, we're directing the water this way.
Exactly. But my concern about concentrating it here even more is that more will come my way. That's my first concern and I'm happy to have conversations with you to, you can explain to me why that may not be the case. My other concern is one of the, one of the waivers you're applying for is not, not having to adhere to the 90% total dissolved solids, is that what it is? And the 60% phosphorus?
Yes.
So does that mean you don't have to make an effort toward that end?
Those, this is where the country drainage versus structural, non-structural, to get to those numbers that they have in DEPs, I'll call it cookbook, you have to meet certain design parameters. You need to have this much depth of ground water, you need to have this long, you need to have the, the shape and feel. And the soil conditions I have here, I cannot satisfy that, so then I can't quantify it directly. The, the biggest thing with stormwater is the reduction of impervious areas. That's pretty much what they quantify your water quality values with. And the trigger point is 15%. That's kind of like the, the barometer that they use. So when you keep a property confined, the less impervious, that's the fastest conduit for the, for the pollutants. When you direct stormwater across lawns, through the wooded areas and even, let's say people do rain gardens, what you're imitating or you're mimicking what the natural environment does. So that, that was the approach on this property to direct as much as I can to meander through the property versus just flowing out into the street, if that makes sense.
It makes sense. Does that mean it'll puddle more often?
On our, in here.
Yeah.
Slowly.
Yeah.
And, and the idea of puddling, you're encouraging recharge, you're encouraging that nutrient uptake. So this is, this is the reason those waivers are being asked for is because to hit, let's say, the standard to hit 90%, I would have to put a deep some catch basin with a sediment four bay with an infiltration basin, all of which bottoms need to be two feet above water and because of. And because I'm so flat, I can't put a deep, I can't get a deep-sump catch basin to work. Rain gardens typically are this deep from the bottom for the media, filtration media, and the bottom needs to be two feet from water table. So the, the puzzle pieces do not fit. I can't straw water in water. So that's, that's the premise. If that makes sense.
No, it makes sense.
But I, but I, I understand your concern, which is why I didn't want to dramatically change the flow path. If you, the, the blue outlines of the drainage area, so like out to the street.
Would you be able to approach the microphone a bit closer?
Sorry. So what, like, I don't know how well you could see. These, this is, this is the area going north. This is the area going to do set property towards your home. And Mr. Swixx is this acre and a half. And then the remainder going into the wetland system, which meanders to the back and ultimately comes out towards Townsend Harbor. So when you, when you see the, the shapes that we've done with the grading, I've reduced, reduced what's, the area, this upper quadrant is now encouraged to go out there instead of just flowing out into the street. So, so.
And that's what wasn't obvious to me in looking at the contour lines, because I see the arrows flow still sort of the same and the, and the, the numbers on the contour lines don't seem to have changed much. So I just was curious.
Yeah, it, it's subtle, because again, this, this is the high point, but most of it's flat. So like, most of these lawn areas, I'm trying to get it 1%, keep it flat. And that's, that encourages recharge and, and minimizes what's going to puddle out here. Because I, like you said, that, that was added in. That was put in for a reason. There must have been a, you know the history better than I do of this area. That was added in, I'm assuming to catch.
No, no, it was, it was added in to catch anything on the side of the road going down to the street.
So washouts, washouts.
So it doesn't all the way, it'll come down to this catch basin down here.
Okay.
And in fact, since they've installed it, they've put sort of a collar on it of pavement.
Yes.
To raise it up towards the field to prevent field water from coming in.
Okay. So this design and the grading that we've done is encouraging reduction out towards the street. So that, that's really the, the goal. So I, and I know it's like, we're asking for waivers, but the waivers is because I technically cannot meet what the stormwater handbook asks me to do.
That makes sense. As far as what comes through the wetland, through the Rash property, and down again into the same parcel down here, should I expect the waivers may affect the quality of the water?
It, it, again, we are lengthening that flow path. It's, with, with stormwater, it's that time for how allowing nutrients to uptake and allowing water to seep into the ground. So from a, from a water quality perspective, again, the amount of tributary area, I'm not anticipating any impacts on there personally. And the analysis, to kind of give you an idea, this, we, we looked at six and a half acres. There's a stone wall that runs along the middle, and there's a little bit of a spine here. There's a hydraulic connection, obviously, there's wetlands here. I, I didn't analyze out there because I'm not changing anything out there. Our, our drainage analysis kind of focuses on where we're making alterations. This does contribute, and I'm sure it contributes quite a bit.
Seasonal.
Yep, seasonally, correct. Yeah, and this time of year, even, I drove by there today, I could see the water flowing through, through the little notch there, and I'm like, yep. And then it drops off, like you said, drops off pretty fast. Yeah, ultimately, ultimately to the lake. But again, there's, it's not a direct, I don't have a direct conduit towards the lake. It's going across hundreds of thousands of feet of woodland and grassland and other people's properties before it even gets there.
Given that this will require a peer review, does that mean there's an opportunity to submit additional questions or commentary?
Yes. So, great question. What will happen is, once we finish public comment and everything, the board is going to hold a vote. And given what I saw from NODs earlier, I believe the vote will be in favor of peer review. We'll ask the applicant to put some money into 53G, is that, yeah, 53G account. I'm, we, our next meeting, we don't have one in two weeks because that's Memorial Day. So our next meeting is June 9th?
Yes.
Okay, June 9th. If we expect turnaround and everything by then, which I think we can, this, this is a public hearing. It will be reopened on June 9th.
Continued.
Yeah, yeah, well, thank you. It won't be reopened, it'll be continued to June 9th reopening, it's different. And I'm just saying, June 9th, we can handle it more formally, but is, would, would that work for y'all, or do you want to move to?
I think the, the limitations, when your peer, the, I'm assuming you have Graves' engineering?
Yeah.
So it's going to be their schedule when they look at it.
Yep.
Get comment, and we give comment back.
And I, I can't tell you for sure what that timing is. I'm guessing a month should be sufficient based on other turnarounds? Would you agree with that, Logan, or do you think we're cutting it too close?
I, I think it's worth a shot.
There isn't a lot of structural elements. I mean, this is again, more of a simplified approach. So I would assume that it would be a quicker review. There's not a lot of, as far as structural sizing that he needs to confirm and groundwater mounding analyses and those sorts of things that are typical.
Yeah. So this will be handled at the planning board at least once more. Now, if the, if come our next meeting on June 9th, if we have all the info and the board is satisfied, that would likely then be the last public, uh, last public hearing, or last day of this public hearing. But yeah, you'd be welcome to come back, ask more questions. It's a public hearing, we always ask for public comment. If you have any you want to submit ahead of time, you can send them to the planning office certainly, or come to the meeting and ask.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Side note, this is what I love about public hearings, when it's a chance for people to say, hey, how does this work? What's going to happen? And the applicant can respond, and there can be discussion, and the teacher in me loves that. Other public comment? Seeing none at this time. We do have an email that was asked to be addressed as well. Calling that up. I think we can just read that in, right? Is that what we do? Yeah, I think so.
Yes.
Okay. Excuse me. Amanda, would you mind reading the email?
I can read you in its entirety.
Uh, yeah.
Okay, perfect. Do you want me to do header and date?
I don't think we need that.
No, okay.
I, I think just the content of the email is fine.
Okay. Good morning. My name is Thomas Colametta, and I reside at 24 Woodland Drive, Lunenburg.
If you'll pause one second, you have not seen this email.
No.
Would you like, would it help you to respond in thinking about it, to read along rather than just hearing it?
I'll just hear it.
Okay.
If it's, if it's, is it something that can be forwarded to us?
Yes.
Okay.
I am writing to today in reference to the public hearing being held Monday, May 12th, 2025, for the stormwater management permitting of 100 Townsend Harbor Road. Unfortunately, I will not be able to attend due to personal commitments. Being the largest abutter of the property at 100 Townsend Harbor Road, I wanted to ensure at the very least my concern were documented. Aside from receiving the first notification that the lot adjacent to my entire property, that at the time of purchase in 2019 was designated Chapter 61A, would be constructing five four-bedroom homes and subdivided as an A and R. Noting during the past five-plus years, the property had only been farmed maybe in 2022, when it was farmed for hay and, and clearly utilized the designation as a tax shelter, which raised the question, did the designation expire or was it removed without proper public notifications provided? The reason I have chose to strictly pose rhetorical question is mainly I have seen the planning and approval of developments that are a complete atrocity, i.e. 700 mass Ave, and questioned how the town can continue to approve these developments when the current infrastructure is bulging at the seams to support the current community. Perfect example is the current school system that barely supports our community's current needs with undersized building for all school-aged children. Below, I have provided a rhetorical question that I felt was important to address. Currently, with any raising water level such as heavy rains, my property experiences extensive rising of the water levels at the rear of the property. And the property experience, experiences extremely high increases in water level surrounding and under the home. Current lot plans show one of the properties would be impeding on the 100-foot wetland buffer zone by surrounding and a meeting on this area. Would this not force any rising water levels to the adjacent property, further increasing levels on my property? Thank you for allowing me this opportunity. I do not look forward to a summer filled with the infiltration of rodents from a lot that has not seen any use in close to a decade, but most important, the noise and disruptions of a five-home subdivision construction site literally in my front and backyard. Respectfully, Thomas Colametta.
Thank you. Before I turn to the applicant, this is where I'm going to kind of talk as the board chair for a minute and, and point out that this is a case where we have public comment with a lot of various thoughts in there. This is a stormwater management permit public hearing. And on the broader sense, as a planning board, by law, we are limited in what we can do and in what we can look at. And I, I keep looking to the side to say this, but the board's heard me say this at almost every meeting for a very long time now, and they're equally aware. For any given public hearing, there are specific requirements we can look at. For none of our public hearings are we allowed to consider things like, are we simply building too many houses and is that bad for the schools? The state law is quite clear about that. And this isn't even the MBTA community, I mean, this is old-school land rights stuff, right? You own a house, you own land, you get to build a house. That, that's a thing. So for any public hearing, we are limited in what we can look at. And for things like stormwater, effectively, we are taking, we are the gatekeepers of a glorified checklist. Are these requirements being met? Now, there's some subjectivity in the, engineering is art and science, and two engineers can approach the same problem differently. And that's one of the reasons we also have peer review, just to get another engineer coming in saying, yeah, that makes sense, or have you considered it this way? Or in the interests of the town, I feel it's imperative it be handled this way. So while there was a lot of concerns voiced here, many of them are things planning could never look at, just by law. And, but we can talk about the stormwater component. And there was concern about the, about moving into that 100-foot buffer zone and if that could increase water in the long run to the app, not the app, to the Comentis property.
And just to kind of give you an idea, the elevationally, this home here where he is, is, that's pretty much the high point of the property. So the, the property that, the lot that's he's referring to is down here below. Now, ultimately, this entire wetland system runs along the low contouring throughout. So that aspect of it is connected. You know, onto, onto his property. But in this area here, we're not making any changes. The stone wall, we're not, we're not, we're respecting his property. Water is flowing to the north along that property line. And that's, when we're done, that's what we're proposing it to be, as it is currently. Now, the impacts here, Lot 5, to him, to the, a lot that's 15 feet higher, I, I, I don't really see the connection.
Okay. That's fine. Great. So we've had some concerns raised. I, I mean, we have no way of knowing if the applicant, if the commenter is satisfied, but that's fine because I did want to make sure it was addressed. Thank you very much for that explanation. And Mr. Colametta, when you review this, if you have questions, encourage you to come on down to our next meeting if you're able. And great, this is, is there any other public comment? Seeing none. Hey, board, do we have any other thoughts or questions at this time?
I think I'm going to feel better after we see a peer review, and I think I'm going to go visit the site as well. I get a little nervous with country drains. There's plenty of country drainage on Flat Hill, and it doesn't work. And the road is flooded constantly. And the, you know, I'm lucky enough that my house is, knock on wood, has been okay. When I lived in the Midwest, we had a lot of country drains. And one inch of rain, the entire street was flooded, and everybody's basement on the street was flooded. So there's concerns with residents, abutters, who already have water in their basements just from the table. Now, you know, I, I'm not sure if a country drain is going to solve the water problems that are kind of being brought to us by the public. So I think a peer review would definitely help, and I think I'm going to, I'm going to view the site too.
No, it makes sense. And, and I agree, I think peer review is going to be super helpful here. I mean, we see this all the time, right? When there's a high water table, things get tricky. And when there's a tradition of water concerns in the neighborhood from a high water table or anything else, residents absolutely, when I say, I was going to say come out of the woodwork, but it always implies a negative for some reason, that's not what I mean. People come out because they're concerned. And that's good, because they should be concerned, and we give them that avenue. And I like that we're going to have the peer review. I like that the applicant has been super forthcoming in discussions, wonderful, thank you. And so let's talk about, let's talk about the peer review. So one of the things I would normally turn to our planner for is the planner would normally make a recommendation to us about the amount to be put into the 53G for peer review. And we nod and go, yeah, that makes sense. And usually for stormwater, it's around $2,000. But I'm actually going to ask you your opinion because if we get it wrong, this could extend it. I don't want to stay too high and make the applicant put more money into an account, even though they get back eventually. I don't want to go too low and potentially mess up the timeline for you. So.
I think a dollar, you're asking us for a dollar figure?
If, if you are, my gut, left to our own devices, I'm going to turn to the board and say, I would look for a motion such as to put $2,000. But if that is too high to be doable for you, that, I mean, that's, I'm giving you some options here because really, this, these are going to be things that impact you way more than us up at the table in the end.
$2,000 figure? I mean, that's what I've seen other similar scope projects being reviewed for.
That's appropriate.
Okay, great. And again, that's not, and for everyone's identification, they don't pay 2,000. They put 2,000 into an account.
If it uses up?
Yeah, if they use it up, they use it up. But if they don't, they don't, and then the applicant gets their money back. Because otherwise, that would be.
Part, part of the, the application for this project was also a $900 review fee. Is that somehow incorporated in that? Because it was based on the acreage of the overall P.
Uh, that is separate.
Okay.
No, that is.
It was a $100 per acre of property?
That, that is not for the engineering, that is for the other work in the town. I can tell you, law. I can tell you, long-term, we are gonna be, we would like to revisit our fee structures and everything else, but these are things we can do when we have a permanent planner in the chair who can give meaningful feedback rather than us doing what looks to be best, but you don't wanna create other issues for applicants or the town if we go too far in the other direction. And, okay, so I would look for a motion such as that the applicant put, that we establish a fifth, do we, or does the applicant establish a 53G? I don't know how that works.
Uh, the vote could just be to require a deposit of $2,000 for the purposes of a 53G account from the applicant.
Like the filing fee, we send you a check or drop off?
Correct, there's a, there's a form to fill out, and the check.
Okay, so we have a so moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, great. The sooner you get that into us, the sooner we can get this off to Graves Engineering for peer review, and hoping this can get done real quick. Looking ahead, how's it work for us to continue to the meeting on June 9th? Would that, if, assuming Graves can turn around, if Graves says he can't, we'll reach out and reschedule, so you know we can look at rescheduling.
Mr. Chairman, Jim Simpson, I'm one of the owners of the property now, the new owner.
Yep.
I can get you the check as soon as tomorrow, and you just tell me where to drop it off and who to give it to, and it'll be taken care of.
We're right across the street in the Ritter Building, and so you can bring it there.
Very good.
Go in the front door, turn right.
I'll look for Logan.
Yep.
I can give you my email and number after this as well.
Perfect.
Okay, great. And would June 9th work for you?
Works fine.
Okay, great. Looking for a motion such as to continue this public hearing to June 9th at 6:05 PM.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, excellent. We will see y'all in a month. I bet we'll see y'all in a month as well. And thank you, everyone. Great, we're golden.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you. So 1083 Northfield Road is before us for two things, for a special permit for common driveway and stormwater management permit. I feel like we, if it's the first, if we're opening the hearing, but they can't because they need to continue from the start, we don't normally open the hearing, we just open it later, right? That's what we've done? Okay, that's what I thought. We were debating best practices because we think that requires us to re-advertise, but we can, do we need to, I don't think we need to motion for the, we can motion if it's irrelevant, it doesn't matter. Let me rephrase. I said that like less authoritatively, I'm making a judgment call. We can make a motion. If it doesn't, if it doesn't matter because the hearing doesn't exist because we haven't opened it, fine. If we suddenly needed it because we're not remembering right, we got it. And Logan, we'll just have to follow up on if we have to re-advertise or not, but fine. Is this gonna screw you up, this approach?
I don't think so, thankfully, because the next meeting is bumped out with the holiday. If we did have to re-advertise, there would be time enough. I would have to potentially chase down the applicant for the, another, oh, actually, I'm not 100% sure because there's the two-week lead time with that. I, my gut's telling me that it wouldn't need to be re-advertised, but.
I think it does, but, all right. I'm just worried about Mr. Allison not being here and us triggering mull and rule. I don't think if we open, even if there's nothing presented.
Is the concern with that, that there's a static amount of those that you can claim?
Yeah, you can only mull and rule one meeting.
Okay.
Like, so for any given public hearing, you can miss one?
Yep.
I don't think it would trigger, but I'm.
No, and with, you know, potential changes to the board composition soon enough, that's a, that's an all concern.
Oh, yeah, you're right. Ah, okay, yeah. Definitely gonna play, your fault, Glenn. Abandoning us, what the heck? All right. So let's, if that is the case, let's, in case we need to, we could have a motion to continue the non-opened public hearings for 1083 Northfield Road, specifically special permit for common driveway and stormwater management permit to our meeting on June 9th, 2025 at 6:05 PM.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Super D-duper. There we go. Great, that is public hearings, check. Board discussions. All right. Tim and I got a mildly exciting email. I mean, I find it exciting, but I get that not everyone is as excited to hear FinCom is ready to send a new member to the Master Plan Steering Committee, but I find that exciting. So, yeah, Finance Committee, we removed them from the Master Plan Steering Committee because they had a member on the, on the steering committee. That member left Finance Committee, and it took, and so we kind of removed it. Finance Committee took some time, they're back up to capacity, they love to put a member in. I'm personally in favor of adding one more to the Master Plan Steering Committee as the FinCom representative, and going back closer to the original goals. Could also help with Quorum to have an active member present. Any discussion on that, or thoughts? We could have a motion to add one more member to the Master Plan Steering Committee, specifically a representative appointed by the Finance Committee.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Hope that's enough. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, great. Rock and roll. Abutting community notices, do we have anything big there?
Um, no, there's a, I wanna say five-lot subdivision happening in Lemonster. There's a hearing for that on the 19th, but it's in like deep, deep Lemonster, farther away from the town line.
Yep. While we're in board discussions, do you mind if I give you a couple other chair updates while I'm thinking of them that I wasn't thinking of earlier, and frankly, going through some of the rigmarole of daily office life probably wasn't needed while people were waiting for business in that case? Just, I wanna let the board know that in the absence of a planner, we're still getting a ton done in the office in terms of things like making sure that the FEMA, the flood plane map update has now been submitted to Katie Pate, who we met from DCR, and she submits it to FEMA on our behalf. We're using their model bylaw pretty much directly, so it would be weird if FEMA came back with any issues, and we're assuming they won't, so that is squared away. I'm working with EOHLC, the State Housing Board, effectively, or housing group, on our application for, ooh, I have to look up that, the title of that one, give me one second, because, go into the correct workflow. Yeah, look, our housing choi, the housing choice designation, designation application is something we do every five years, and that opens us up for grants and everything. That's an application that Chris started when he was with the town, and I've been working with EOHLC to get our application in, and it's a little questionable if we meet the requirements this year, so putting it on our radar that we may need to do a little bylaw or other work coming up to solidify that, but that opens us up for a lot of grants and benefits for the town, so it's something we're gonna wanna make sure we do. It looks like we've slipped a little bit, while we haven't had real strong plant, like consistent planning over years, for the past couple of years, so we can apply next year if we don't get in, not a big deal. And the requirements are, this isn't like a grant where you're applying, this is just to qualify, so it's a set of criteria, hard criteria checklist. We may meet it, we may not, I'm waiting on that feedback, but there's things like that that's been going through the office, and Logan can, and Logan continues to be a godsend, as well as Brian Jingeris has been super helpful, and Andrea Health as well. All right. So, committee reports. Master Plan Steering Committee.
Um, we've had a few meetings since I last checked in, having a couple minor reorganization, reorganization issues. There's a couple of people who are leaving their positions on different boards, so they need to be replaced, and I'm just trying to coordinate and get those positions filled, refilled as soon as we can. Yeah, so hopefully we've got, still working, trying to organize meetings, hopefully we can get something on the books soon.
Mm-hmm. I can let you know that I did bring everyone's homework from that committee.
Okay.
I did collate it, bring it to over-under, and when we can eventually meet, they will be equipped and prepared to address some of those with the committee, and you and I can kibbutz about the next agenda. There's, I think we'll want to be thoughtful about that agenda, but we're gonna wanna make sure that we plan for some significant time, and with enough notice so the over-and-under can come out, and they can kind of share where everything is. A lot of the questions we have, I think, that the, or that the committees had, can be answered pretty thoroughly at this point, for why this recommendation, how come this?
Just for my own edification, what kind of homework return percentage do we get?
Okay. Certainly, certainly better than it has been.
Okay.
Um, I think, how many people are on the committee?
Uh, 13.
13?
Although I wouldn't have expected Mr. Rob to have done it.
I think we got about 50%.
Okay.
So, no, honestly, real great compared to what, and I don't wanna throw them under the bus.
Yeah.
Getting homework out of volunteer committee members is hard.
Yes.
Okay, so, great. Open Space Committee.
Uh, nothing since our last meeting. We are, we are scheduled to meet tomorrow night.
Um, because that came up in a discussion today, we were planning on getting together with Open Space Committee at one point, and I don't remember the exact topic.
I think it was just, you had offered to have like a joint meeting with the, with them, and maybe specific to the whole property coming out of chapter to kind of streamline that.
Okay, that's what I thought it was. All right, okay, great.
But that, I mean, I learned a lot through that, you know.
Yeah.
Through that process, and it does seem like, you know, the, the Board of Select, you know, the point person, the point board.
I would love to have that discussion with them. Again, I would personally rather we hold that discussion till we have, maybe an interim planner can do it, but I think realistically, we'll wanna wait till we have one hired for the town. But you can bring that to the committee and see what they think.
Yeah, that meeting is actually Wednesday.
Oh, okay. Municipal Building Design Committee, Mr. Allison isn't here. Capital Planning Committee has not met, you saw the results of capital planning at a town meeting, and we will be. Now, I'm assuming with Mr. Beardmore leaving the school committee and Mr. Alonso leaving the select board, they will not be continuing in their roles on that committee, but that isn't necessarily true, I should verify that, because capital planning is weird, and that it is a three-year appointment from boards, not a one-year appointment. I mean, still, people leave and get put in off-cycle anyway, that's how I went in, but I don't know how that's gonna shift, but we'll see. Economic Development Committee.
Same conversation that we've had going along, still the focus is on trying to make Lunenburg more attractive and easier for businesses to come to town. And we did have a meeting with the, you know, both chairs, the Chair of the Planning Board as well as the EDC, as kind of a planning session moving forward. And tomorrow, actually, tomorrow's meeting, tomorrow morning, is with the, I'll be at the Lunenburg Business Association, which I believe that you're planning to attend.
Yes, I am.
Yeah, so.
Now, the LBA, for the sake of those at home, the LBA is a separate organization from the Economic Development Committee. You see healthy overlap there, but the LBA is a separate, non-government organization to promote business in town, as well as to help businesses be good citizens of town. A lot of what they did, like that amazing, for those who went to the vendor fair, it was an awful lot of fun, and it was wicked fun and wicked good, even though it rained cats and dogs for days prior and through the beginning of it. So I real, I certainly hope the LBA intends to continue with that, because that was a great experience.
Yes. So I do appreciate the Chair's participation in that effort, and it's, I think, very important to open up the lines of communication with, with the business community, and I think that's a, a good initiative that you're participating with.
Thank you. All right, we've got Stormwater Task Force.
Um, we gave our little advertisement at a town meeting, kind of introduced the town to what we're doing, and hopefully we get, so we start getting some public engagement, and we can start discussing with the town what it is we want to do.
Great, wonderful. Monticent Regional Planning Commission.
Uh, we met last week on Thursday. A little side info on MBTA communities, Shirley is in compliance now, and their, their funding seems to only be for, like, the grant that they were able to get is only for the MBTA community and its surrounding area and transit stations. So a lot of times with these MBTA presentations, they say, well, you know, if you don't do the MBTA compliance, you're not going to be eligible for any grants, but it seems like these grants that they're speaking of are only applicable to those surrounding areas.
Uh, did, was that the feedback from MRPC?
That is what it seemed, when they, when they presented it, it said it was only for the surrounding roads and transit systems of that area. So I'm not sure if that's 100% correct, but the way it was presented at the meeting, that's what it seemed like.
Because I'm curious, because that may be what's happening in Shirley. I know the state has threatened a much larger stick for which funds and grants would no longer become available, as well as at one point basically saying that the AG might be involved to.
Right.
Force compliance through the courts.
Right, so I'm unsure that's just from. Right, so I'm unsure, that's just from what I've heard.
Yep.
From Shirley. And then we also were in the midst of our beginning of reorganization of the group, so there wasn't a lot of things going on. We did speak about M R P C and their documentation. Because of the current presidential administration, they need to adjust all of their documentation to remove certain key words like climate change being a big one. So they are spending thousands of hours redoing their paperwork to omit these words that the federal government doesn't want to see. And if the federal government does see these words, then they will stop funding to the, at the federal level. However, because Massachusetts laws, and we believe in science in Massachusetts, are different. They're having one set of documentation for the state and a different set of documentation for the federal government. So, and they say in about three and a half years, they might just have to throw this one out. So that's kind of what's going on with the M R P C. It looks like their funding is back for, for now. It got pulled for a hot second, but it's back. So yeah, things are tumultuous, but we're, we're going right along.
I gotta tell you, in the face of a wildly fluctuating, difficult, funding unsure scenario, Monticent Regional Planning Commission is doing a bang-up job of figuring out what funds are available. Of trying to figure out what funds are more likely to remain available. As well as hosting sessions, like launching learns, basically for members of constituent communities, for the, in government to get together and say, okay, how are you facing these challenges?
And as Glenn Eaton says, who runs the M R P C, he basically says he can go to bed, and the next morning, there could be a completely different set of rules, and then the next day, completely set of, different set of rules. So they're, they're very good at navigating these changes that have been going on.
Is, is Glenn, is Glenn approaching retirement?
Yes, next year.
That's what I thought, that is going to be, that is going to be a loss for North Central Massachusetts. The people who impact your life that you've never met, or you may well have met a dozen times at the store or something, and you'll never know. Glenn Eaton is one of those who's really done a great job of, the regional planning commissions help fill a role, like M R P C. They help fill a role by giving, by having an availability of specific expertise in resources that can be, that allow the towns in the region to outsource, as well as coordinating multi-town efforts where appropriate for things like grants and everything, as well as helping organize and make sure things stay fair between the towns. Glenn is an absolute asset to North Central Massachusetts, and he's one of those people that has, over many years, improved your life, and you've probably never heard his name until tonight. So I just think people, even though I don't think Glenn will ever hear this, people deserve shout-outs. And Monticent Joint Transportation Committee.
We haven't met, we'll meet on Wednesday.
Okay. Minutes of approval for our four twenty-eight meeting.
I wasn't here for that meeting.
That is, yep, you are, you may choose to recuse yourself, that is fine.
Okay.
You are allowed in Massachusetts to vote on approval of minutes for meetings you weren't at.
Ah, okay.
You don't have to, but I just wanted to let you know. And that's in our drive, I don't know if people have had a chance to review yet.
I already read them, can I make a motion, then somebody can second later?
Yep, you can make a motion, and then I'm assuming it'd be Glenn who is second when he's ready, and then I'm good.
Motion to approve the planning board minutes from our April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Abstentions?
Aye.
There we go. Bang-a-rang, all set. Meeting schedule. We meet at six P M. here, our beautiful town hall, and you'll notice I say beautiful every time I refer to town hall. Take a look at it when you drive by, and then if you're ever here, like, if you're actually up in the below the meeting room upstairs, actually look up at the old tin ceiling and everything. It's a nice historic building. But we're here at beautiful town hall, and our next meeting is Janu- January.
Oh, boy, listen.
Make any A and R you want, folks, that's, no. June ninth, again, our next scheduled meeting would be on Memorial Day, and we don't meet because government is closed. So Ju-, our next two meetings are June ninth and June twenty-third. Yeah. So, before, I just wanted, before we go on to the end, I, I said I wanted to loop back to M B T A communities a little. Actually, so. What I would like to do, and I've kind of talked about this some before, but being clear, we're kind of under the gun, we don't get a lot of timing. I would like to take the info that Nell shared with us tonight. Flush out the slides, maybe gussy it up a little for sales purposes to make it pretty. I'd like us to have a couple public meetings. I may be reaching out about scheduling for those, because I'd love to have us there to all hear the public input, if that's doable for people's schedules. If we're doing that, though, we'll want to announce it. Strictly needed if we're not, it's better if we do, though, much better. So I will be reaching out over that, starting probably the next couple of days as we finalize times. And basically, the idea would be to get feedback on some of these options. And go from there. Do we want to, but I want to offer, open it up to us. What do people think? Do we have, I mean, ultimately, the towns go, the townspeople are going to make recommendations to us, I know how this board works, we're going to take them very seriously. But we also have our opinions, and we're the ultimate. We're the ultimate decision-makers for what is presented at town meeting, and then the town is the real ultimate decision-maker, and if it goes through. What do we have for thoughts?
Well, I was hoping all along that it would just kind of go away.
Yeah.
It hasn't happened yet. But it will be interesting to have that conversation with, with Town Council, because I think it's very important to have, because you know we'll get those questions at, you know, town meetings. So we have to, have, have to be prepared, you know, with, with that guidance, but. Yeah, I just don't, I just don't like it at all, and I, and I think the, what's the phrase that keeps going around, the, the least bad option? Least bad, bad option would be the paper compliance.
Mm-hmm.
Of the Tri-Town. It just, it just seems disingenuous, I mean, it, it's, it doesn't, it's not real, you know, I'm, I'm a fan of logic, and it doesn't, you know, just kind of gets me into the, the whole rabbit hole of what I, what I do not like about the M B T A, M B T A Communities Act. And that, you know, now try not to go down that, that rabbit hole, but it was one of the, the points earlier that, you know, it just bothers me is that, you know, it's the M B T A Communities Act, and we're a small adjacent community. And because of that, we don't have to, and we don't have an M B T A station, that we actually can put it anywhere in the community. Like, that seems counter to the whole goal of the, the law. So it's, you know, the more you think about it, you know, the more frustrated, the more I think about it, the more frustrated I get, but I, again, going back to the, you know, it is, it is the state government's law, and we have to abide by it, and it is what it is, but I'll just end there.
I agree. It, it is frustrating. We could have one other member of the board at that meeting with Town Council. We, we can't have three without publishing ahead of time, but did anyone want to join me for that meeting? It is, like, next week, Wednesday at, like, one P M. If anyone wants to, let me know.
I, I certainly will with that, that, you know, the asterisk, but either way, I would still go.
Okay.
But that would, that would open up for someone else.
Yeah. All right, so, no, I agree, I, I hadn't processed, you know, it's, it's one of those things I knew but had forgotten that Tri-Town has more zoned capacity than was used in developing that district, which, to Nell's point, I mean, you can't predict the future, but I, I think that makes me feel better that we could be zoning that, and it's far less likely to disrupt people's lives. Again, I've had some good conversations, and the good news is that the type of develop, I know I said it before, but I want to say it again for people who are watching this part of the meeting. The type of development we're talking about for the M B T A communities, yes, the state uses the term family-friendly. And it really is family-friendly for the culture of places further east of us, where what we're viewing as crazy dense. I mean, I was in discussions, went back when this was proposed, I was in discussions with people on Reddit who basically said, what's the big deal? Fifteen units an acre, twenty units an acre is nothing, that's not dense. But they're speaking from a very, a much more urban mindset. And for there, yeah, no, it's actually kind of open and gives comparatively more space. In a town like Lunenburg, it doesn't attract families at the same rate, so we've had a lot of concerns about schools and everything. I feel, I'm much less worried about that than I was. I still like the idea of the paper compliance, because a lot of our options, I personally think we could, I'd like to see dense development in some of those areas, but I think we could do it better.
And that, and that is, again, speaking to the importance of the, the, the public hearings, the meetings, is, you know, there certainly could be a contingent of the population that wants them and embraces it, and could bring a, a certain perspective that would, you know, swing us in theory, but you know, it's just important we do those in-person, you know, public outreaches.
Although on that topic, I, I know that when I say, I'm going to sit here as the playing board chair and say, I'd like to see dense development, and I can, don't worry, Lunenburg, I can feel your hackles raising through the television screen.
And I find it interesting, I've heard a lot of unsolicited comments about seven eleven mass abs, that the, the four duplexes that are kind of shoehorned into that, that parcel, I mean, that's nothing.
Yeah, I mean, I think some of those concerns are aesthetic.
Yeah, for sure.
In nature.
Yeah, I think coming from the Midwest, a lot of our, our more dense areas look exactly like that, even more intrusive. Like, I've been in townhomes where you're looking directly from your kitchen into someone else's kitchen. And so, you know, aesthetically, does it make sense, you know, maybe not, maybe it's a little more dense, but in the long run, I don't think it's as, as bad as it could have been.
And. I think one of the things we, we need to be aware of as a community. We don't have to like that there's a housing crisis in the state. There is a housing crisis in the state, and I will be first to point the finger east of us, specifically at Boston. And I will, I could give you my opinions about having the ability to freely develop a ton of basically business space, commercial and industrial, without needing to have the corresponding residential. We don't get that luxury. It's not, kind of cute that they do and we don't, and we get foisted with it. But there, it hasn't changed the fact there is a housing crisis, I mean, you're a property owner in Lunenburg for the past five, ten years, congratulations on all the money you've made on paper. There's exceptions, but it's all very expensive now. If our, we want to look to the future for housing, maybe the people who grow up here could move into, we're going to have to get thoughtful. And as the state keeps changing these regulations, we need to be aware that by right development means it's going to happen. To that end, one thing Adam Burney said to me before he left is an old adage, I guess, for planners, which is plan or be planned upon. So when we think about things like dense development, we have to understand it is coming to our community regardless. Our choice is not if, but if we're proactive, our choice can be how. And do we want to let developers make those choices? Or do we want to be proactive and thoughtful about it, hopefully using that master plan as a document to guide us? So that we have the option of having this necessary development that's going to happen in a way that doesn't hurt our rural character and charm in the parts that many of us like about the town? Can we still have farms and dense mixed-use development and not have them ruin each other's vibe? By the way, if you're at home and ever want to talk about this, ooh, let me know, I would be happy to sit down and chat.
Chair, I, I think it is also important to, to highlight that this, the M B T A Communities Act is not even a really affordable housing. I mean, a lot of these are very expensive rental units, you know, it, the, people don't have the opportunity to, to purchase them, and if they do, they're very expensive, and there are no, like, there's very limited affordable units in it, in fact, most of these units create more of a need to meet the ten percent affordability, so it's, it's, it gets caught up in the conversation, but these houses are not, in my opinion, and by, you know, a lot of people, they're actually not affordable housing, they're very expensive.
No, they, they are intentionally, we can argue if it's right or wrong. And I think there's good arguments on both sides, I'm, I'm not convinced either way yet myself, but M B T A communities is aimed at what they're, what they're calling the missing middle. That we've got a lot of single-family homes. We have affordable housing by right, or sorry, by requirement. But affordable housing being a technical thing, a lot of people who can't afford big single families also would never qualify for affordable housing. There's a middle component, in theory, that's what M B T A communities was supposed to address, but as we know, it is a three-sentence law that got flushed out after it was passed.
I don't know.
Anything else from the board?
Conversation, I mean, interest in our future public meetings.
What's that?
Hopefully we drummed up in, uh, interest in our future public meetings.
I hope so, because again, town engage in the planning, or others will do it for us.
Could I make a quick procedural comment on those public info sessions?
Yeah.
I think this may have been addressed earlier, but just if there is a, a quorum of the planning board there, it would have to get posted. Granted, it wouldn't have the gigantic lead time that a, like, public hearing under forty-eight and such would. But that would, that would need to get posted.
Yeah, no, it would need to get, sorry, I had thought that loudly. And so when I talked about over the next couple of days, a few days, that was because I realized that we're going to come up against that.
Yeah.
What is our time, what is our lead time on that? Like, because it, it's not a public hearing, it's just a board meeting.
I believe that's just the forty-eight hours required by O and L, but I'll verify that tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, no, if that's forty-eight, that's fine, but I just want us to be, because we'll want more notice than that out to the public, so they can plan to be there. Super. Okay, anything else? Well, golly, board, if there's no other board, board comment or concerns, I would take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Friends at home, thank you for joining us for this, what was likely Mr. McLeod's last meeting as a member of this committee, we'll see. But everyone have a wonderful evening out there in Lunenburg, and have a good night, take care.